Okay, let's get started. Welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting and as we begin this meeting, I just want to announce we're going to join the memory of three persons. First of all, we're going to adjourn the memory of U.S. Senator Dianne Feinstein, who's represented California since 1992, and obviously she was a trailblazer and a champion for California. We also would adjourn this meeting in memory of Alan Almost. He was a Montclair Fire Chaplain for the Montclair Fire Department since 2013. He passed away on September 23rd. We send our condolences to his family and recognize of his services to the city of Montclair. And then finally, I'm going to recognize or we're going to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Terry Kirkman. Terry was a Montclair resident and he was known for writing and performing while a member of the 1960s group called the Association. He died on September 23rd at his home. He was 83. So I'm going to ask, now we do the invocation, the pledge allegiance, and could you please announce those two individuals?
Yes, the invocation tonight will be given by a Montclair Police Chaplain, Joe McTarsney, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Rue.
Great, please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father, we lift up our community before you, and we ask you that you please keep everybody safe. We thank you for the leadership of our city. We pray that you continue to give them wisdom and strength, Lord. And we pray, Lord, for this meeting, that you will guide it and be the center of it. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag of our nation.
Praise your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will now do presentations and the first person, the first presentation will be again from our police chaplain.
Mayor, we do need a call roll call.
How about a roll call? That sounds good. I like that.
Councilmember Lopez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre.
I'm present.
Thank you.
I think I'm present. So now we'll do the presentation. I want to ask our Montclair Police Chaplain, Joel McTarsney. Please come on, coming up. He's going to speak on behalf of the Maui County Council Member, Thomas Cook of Official County Pens for the Democratic City Council. Go ahead. I'm mumbling over here.
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, we were in Maui near Lahaina, and we were conducting relief work for the people that literally lost everything. And we brought a whole lot of supplies and donations from our Church of Calvary Montclair. The mission was entitled From Montclair to Maui. And while there, I was able to meet one of the council members and he was so moved that donations would come from Montclair. And he wrote this letter, and I would like to read it to you this evening. These county of Maui pens are presented as a token of my appreciation for the donations that were collected in your city and support of the Maui Welfare Relief Efforts. I know that the families receiving donations will be grateful for your support during such a tragic time. In addition, thank you for sending a group of volunteers from your city to deliver these much needed supplies. Please continue to keep the people of Maui County in mind as we move towards welfare relief and recovery efforts. The journey ahead will be a marathon, not a sprint. With aloha, Thomas Cook, Councilmember.
So he has some pens for us?
I do have.
All right, how about we all go down here anyways, for our next presentation and come on down. Yeah, and I just want to say Pastor, obviously, we all know what took place in Maui. It's a very horrible event, many lives unfortunately impacted result of that. And they can use all the help they can. I did something myself, my birthday. But it can use all the help we can. Unfortunately, that feels like that was a long time ago. We forget and move on to other things. Like who's going to be the next speaker of the House right now, but that's a side note. Nevertheless, thank you very much, and let's remember the people of Maui. Thank you. Okay, now I have the opportunity to do the next presentation. This is a proclamation of the 2023 Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. So do we have any members of code enforcement in the room? All right, come on up there. You guys are shy back there and come on up, guys. Don't be shy. Especially the guy in front. Can't believe he's so you guys just surround us or over here on the wall or everyone else, but all that good stuff. You're okay right here. You too, right here. Very good. We want Gabe over there. We don't want him too close to us. So you know, I'm not going to read all the wherazas, but I think many of us know what code enforcement do. One of their jobs is to go out and enforce the municipal code, especially when it comes to property maintenance issues. Obviously, they deal with health and safety issues in the community. But I know in Montclair, they do a lot more interest that I know that also the other thing that they do is they're really dealing with the homeless issue. They have taken the lead in that departments, Gabe and Robert especially. And that's an area of high importance. And I know in the past, he also took on the massage parlors, right, Gabe? That was one of his favorite hangouts, massage parlors, right, Gabe? Yeah, massage parlors, another area. They take a lot of interest in the past. Obviously, dealing with graffiti, dealing with our multifamily neighborhoods from the past. You know, the being a code enforcement officer, I never was one, but I have no idea what it's like since my days in the city of Rialto. But they really don't get a whole lot of respect. They get yelled at a lot, spit at a lot. Either you're not doing your job correctly or 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 you know, you either you being too tough on someone or not tough enough on someone. You're not doing your job correctly, or you needed your job, one of those two. So I appreciate what you guys do, seriously. You know, every city employee is, every city employee is important in Montclair, including our code enforcement division. And thank you very much for all of you here. And who am I going to give this proclamation to? And who's going to speak? Ooh, Gabe? Come on, Gabe, don't be shy. So Gabe, here's the proclamation on behalf of the City Council of Montclair. We're going to declare this as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. I guess I can't say anything. No, really, I do want to thank the city manager, the mayor, and all the city councils for the continued support that we get. I thank God that we have a team here that appreciates and understands the importance of putting people first and actually serving the community. And this following year, we are really looking forward to connecting with our residents and expanding resources, programs, and enforcement remedies to assist us in accomplishing community goals. So again, thank you very much for this award. It means a lot to us. Even though I was the one that accepted it, you guys deserve the the honor. So thank you, you guys. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The newest one.
Okay, we have one more presentation. This is the presentation, the background of Community Choice Energy. This is presented by EES Consulting, and I think Mr. John Valdivia is in the audience. And John and I know each other from the past, since John used to be the mayor of San Bernardino. And him and I worked together on Ametrans and also Yosemite County Transportation Authority. So John, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, honorable members of the city council. I'd like to express my deep appreciation to the city manager, Mr. Starr. Thank you, sir, for having us tonight on the presentation of tonight's topic. The topic is Community Choice Energy Aggregation, oftenly and commonly referred to in the acronym of CCE or CCA. This is, and you'll bear with me, please, I'm controlling the slide deck here. Also joining me on the Zoom call is Howard Choi. Howard is representative on behalf of EES and GDS based in Marietta, Georgia. We are here tonight to present it overview, a very high view of the CCA/CCE model. And tonight, you'll hear the term interchangeable, but tonight I will be using CCA term. It's Community Choice Energy Aggregation stemmed from an outcry of local municipalities about 23 years ago. In 2001 to 2002, state legislators decided after multiple calls to incorporate their own and began the feasibility study of really trying to understand what what is next and what is best for local cities. The state legislator allowed, legislation allowed for the creation of the CCA model. As you can see on the PowerPoint presentation there above, CCA simply and just frankly, it allows the local municipality to begin purveying and entering in the contract service. So the Edison is Edison PG&E or take your favorite provider. Now the local city municipality has the procurement purchasing power agreements. As you can see on the slide deck, the utility, the lines remain in full operation of Edison. So Edison would maintain and operate and certainly maintain those wires. In fact, the transmission lines and the generate or the transmission lines, I should say, and the wires are still owned by Edison. I will turn it over to Howard Choi. Howard, on the test, are you there, sir?
I'm here.
Okay, Howard, you're nice and loud, and you're joining the Montclair City Council here. Would you please kind of take a PowerPoint slide number two and continue on?
Yeah, if that's a slide, please. And I apologize that I can't make it there in person, but I do commit to attending any future meetings that council or staff would like to get updated on this further. The next slide would show that why would a city want to buy the power instead of Edison for their constituents? The bottom line is it's local control of where the power comes from, whether that's from distant states or other parts of the state, or whether it's from locally generated sources within the city or outside the city. Actually, it could even be buying the cheapest power. Do you know whether Edison is buying you the cheapest power possible? Nobody really knows because their contracts are all privileged information. And then thirdly, the on that third bullet or the third graphic, the local jurisdictions would control the rates set for the customers and the programs designed for the customers. So controlling the rates in terms of providing incentive rates or subsidy rates or rates that incentivize business development. It's up to the local jurisdiction now. And there are a number of sources of funding for customer programs that the local jurisdiction would be in control of as well. Next slide, please. Half the state is doing this, whether in combination between cities and counties, groups of cities, multiple counties and cities. There is no test period anymore for this. It is a mature industry. It is growing and will continue to grow as the results that we've seen continue to propagate. So this is, this is no pilot, and this is no, let's see what happens. This is a, an industry that is fully mature now.
Howard, if I, if I may, to the council and mayor, as you noticed, this was essentially grew very strong along the coastal communities of the state of California, from San Diego to Eureka. And now those interior pockets is where we're getting involved, those interior, what we call donut holes. And so Howard Choi and I are making vast inroads in multiple counties and jurisdictions throughout the, throughout the interior portion. Next slide.
So here's a graphic showing the financial status of many of the CCAs, most of the larger ones. The first column shows the names of the CCAs. The second column shows the combination of jurisdictions, cities, counties, groups of cities and counties. The third column is the most impactful. That is the financial net position of all the CCAs that I was able to dig up the latest financial report information for. The takeaway here is they're all, they're all making money. They're all putting money in the bank. This is a net revenue business enterprise. So what to do with those net funds, that is now totally up to the governing jurisdiction, whether it be Board of Supervisors, County Board of Supervisors, or city councils. We're, we're finding that CCAs can provide lower rates. They can offer customer programs that can go hand in hand with other utility programs that are out there, and they can make net revenues in the process of doing that. Scale is important. Now, I'll say here that size does matter in this case. And if you go to the next slide.
Well, one thing, Howard, before we go onto the next slide is I think the last row there, the Orange County Power Authority, it was created within the last fiscal year. It already has a positive cash flow of $41 million. Orange County Power Authority includes the cities of Fullerton, Irvine, Huntington Beach, and Buena Park, as well as the unincorporated portions of Orange County.
Yeah, let me, let me also go back, please. Let me also point out the, the one CCA that shows a parentheses net position, that's a loss. That's the city of Solana Beach, a town of about 7,000 people down in San Diego County. They actually started out on their own. They realized that they were too small and they needed to grow. So their, their, their latest, well, their 63021 financial position shows a net position in the negative. What they've done since then is they've added eight other cities in Solana County to their, to their business. So they now have Oceanside and Carlsbad and Del Mar and Vista and San Marcos. So they, they have grown to overcome the challenges of being too small when they started. Next slide. These are examples of customer programs that CCAs are running. They're all local. They're not created by Southern California Edison or the state. These are all very, very local programs. Next slide are just another example of of very local programs that CCAs can run. And final slide.
Howard, bringing this back home, I think to our council members and the mayor here in our council chambers, is that the beauty of CCAs is that it has the local control aspect. Not to lose sight that Edison, while, while we certainly appreciate that provider, but most municipalities that have incorporated into a CCA have the flexibility now to customize programs at the local level. Whereas you really can't find that at any other level. Here is our final slide, and we'll conclude with this slide. Go ahead, Howard.
Yeah, and I just want to add on what John said. This, this is, this is radical change when, when CCAs first came out. And what we're, what the conclusion now is that there is a place for local government and local control in an industry that has been dominated by the investor-owned utilities, and that's the power and energy supply industry. There, there is now a place for local government to have a very significant role in meeting the energy needs and providing significant benefit to customers in the energy industry that never existed for 100 years. So this is, this is, this is a sea change. So where we're at now, John, with, with ex-mayor Valbevia's help, I have been, I and John have been work, working with many cities in the inland empire, including the county of San Bernardino, just providing background and base information about how CCA works. We've gotten very, very good response so far. I mentioned scale, and so what we've seen with the CCA example throughout the state is partnerships with other cities, with the county. Partnerships provide that strength in numbers and mitigate risk. So we're promoting the notion that either the entire inland empire can partner on this or groups of multiple groups of cities can also partner on this. So we're promoting the idea of cities putting out solicitations through the RFQ process for a partner to, to guide cities through this, through this challenge. And the solicitation is that we're promoting, that we would respond to our turn, our team that can turnkey startup and operate a CCA for cities is, is just to become a partner and provide information. It's a no commitment relationship. We'll continue to provide information, the who, what, why, where, and how of how this could work. When it comes time to decide to go or no go, we would be there as a partner. If the decision is no go, then that's fine. We understand that. So there, there's a lot still to understand on this, and we think that this, this no commitment RFQ process is, is, is a sound next step. There are a handful of cities that have expressed interest in leading an RFQ process. And we're presenting this tonight in the hopes that Montclair would, would be interested enough to work with John and I to get more information and then potentially with these other cities that may potentially lead an RFQ process where they could, they could be a part of the investigation and analysis with no commitment. So with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Choi. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate your time and your indulgence here tonight. Thank you, sir, for the very important topic of CCA, and we'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Johnny Henry. Diane, did you have something to say? Nope, I don't think so. Unless you're going to tell me we're in violation of the Brown Act. I don't think so, but I don't see, oh, Councilmember Lopez.
Mayor Valdivia, I never thought I'd see you in these chambers.
Great to see you, sir.
In this role, so I appreciate. I've been in your chambers when you were mayor, so it's, it's great to have you on the other side, active in private sector.
Your, your city council floors are just, I was telling the city clerk, they're beautiful.
Compared to your last.
So your janitors and your maintenance team and your campus here is just awesome. It's beautiful.
Are you implying they're better than San Bernardino's?
Well, these days, maybe so. These days, maybe so.
Um, question.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand that the phrase local control was used, but did I understand that power would be bought from Edison and Edison would still own the power itself?
Well, very simply put, the, the wires and the maintenance thereof would continue to be with Edison. The procurement and purchasing contract of electrons would be through the city of Montclair, so, or the JPA, however that's formed. So it could be a collection of multiple cities, a formation of a JPA, or the city of Montclair joining another city. And then the city would then procure a contract with the purchase of the electrons on a one-year, three-year, five-year, even a 10-year commodity charge.
And then who, who have you approached locally thus far? Are there any of our surrounding cities or those on the West End?
Yes, sir. Very good question. We have had a phenomenal response from the county of San Bernardino, including the West End communities and several of those communities and council members, as well as city managers and mayors have, have been open to the idea. We have talked to plenty of the West End communities surrounding you, sir.
I had a question in my mind, and then it just slipped my mind as you mentioned something else. If I recall in some of the literature that I read, this, this proposal initially did not survive the County Board of Supervisors, correct?
Yes, approximately 10 to 12 years ago, it was undertaken, understudy in the 2014 era, when I was a city council member in the city of San Bernardino. And it went under the auspices and care of the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. And they commissioned a feasibility and NEXUS report of which EES and GDS provided the response to them. Unfortunately, it was a no action from the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. Now, that was eight to 10 years ago. A lot can change in those times, and a lot has. I'm here to provide an update to you that the Clarifier 2.0 has much changed from eight to 10 years ago. And so that's why we're here tonight and providing the update to you, that there is a lot of, a lot more flexibility for you as a, as a city council. And there's a lot of pennies to collect in the sofa chairs as you contemplate revenues for the city of Montclair or the JPA. My, my position has always been that as a mayor, we should be on the look, city council members should be looking out for new additional revenues to support the hiring of additional staff members here at City Hall and expanding the powers of our local city. So this affords a lot of opportunities. I can get into the deeper nuances of the failures of a CCA. I'll tell you this, council member, the 25 CCAs are in existence today. They're in full operation. They're virulent and growing and strong. Of them, the 25, only one or maybe two have had a horror story. And we can talk to you about those offline if you care to. I'm happy to take your phone call or meet for lunch or meet here at City Hall for a coffee. But 98% of these CCAs are very successful. As you can see on that PowerPoint slide on the financials, many of them are very, very strong.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the answers.
Councilmember Rue.
Yes, you're saying, what you're telling me is in our case, we receive our residents and our businesses service from Southern California Edison. What you're saying is they will be responsible for the poles, the underground, all of this. So how do they pay for that?
Howard, do you want to address that, sir?
Yeah, the, under a CCA, the utility bill to the customers would still come from Edison. And historically, half the bill is for the lines and wires, half the bill is for the electrons. So the, the customer would still pay the bill. Edison would collect its share for the lines and wires, and now the city of Montclair as a CCA would collect their share as the power provider.
And I, I just will have to read more about this because I'm a bit of a skeptic. Okay, I go back to the era when we did not have deregulation 20 years ago or more. And my electric rates were pretty low. We heard deregulation would solve everything. You'd have very low rates, plenty of power, no outages, never a problem. Well, here we are over 20 years later. My bills are through the roof.
Sure.
We still have power outages. We still have a lot of problems. So I'm a bit of a skeptic on this. I'd need to read more about it.
Councilmember, we'd be happy to meet with you individually, sir. I would, would love the opportunity to have coffee with you and explain it more in detail. I'll reach out to your office and attempt to book an appointment, sir. Thank you.
Miracle Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question, and that is, how does the CCA impact the residents? Does their bill go up? It goes down? What, what's the benefit for residents for cities to do this?
Well, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, it's a delight to see you, and, um, I, I like to use butcher paper and Crayola's, especially when I was a, a mayor of a big city. I think at the end of the day, many residents, many constituents that you serve, they simply don't care how they, the power comes to their home. They want it, they're more concerned and apprehensive that the lights turn on, that the microwave is working, and that the air conditioner turns on. Most residents, as well as the business owners and the commercial, uh, uh, industrial sectors of your city, would probably share the similar story, right? And so there will be no change. There, the, the actual constituent wouldn't know the difference. Uh, and so we can talk to you more about the opt-in, opt-out provisions of a CCA offline. I'm happy to, uh, have coffee with you and meet with you on that. But at the end of the day, most residents, they just want their lights to turn on. Would you agree?
I agree that they want their lights to come on, but I also would say that they want their bill to be decreased because the electricity bills are atrocious.
Very, very true. Uh, Mr. Troy, can you address, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem's, uh, concerns regarding billing and, and the cost savings associated with the incorporation of the CCA?
Yeah, for that half of the bill that the CCA is responsible for, which is the supply of the electrons or the power, uh, I believe currently, all the CCAs, uh, that are operating in California provide lower rates for the electrons than the investor-owned utility does at, 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 at this moment. Uh, I would say historically, over the life of most of the CCAs, they have, for the most part, provided lower rates than the, uh, than the incumbent utility.
Thank you. It was, if possible, can you send us a graph of that information?
Absolutely.
Sure, we'll be happy to follow up with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, great. Thank you very much. And, uh, um, I, I know that you're working with some other cities, and we've talked, we've talked in the past. And perhaps one of the cities may take the lead on this, invite other cities through this RFQ you've talked about. Um, so, um, you know, I think, you know, there's some interest here, it sounds like it. We want to learn more about it. Um, so, you know, when, when that city's ready, that's the city, let us know, and then, uh, we'll go from there.
Thank you, sir.
We'll analyze it, everything, and, uh, and we'll make a decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're now on public comments. This is an opportunity for any members of the public that wish, wishes to address the city council, um, on any item on the consent calendar or, or any, that's not, that's not on the consent calendar. Obviously, if it's not on the consent calendar, we can't discuss it as a city council. You have five minutes. If you're on Zoom, you hit the raise hand feature. If you're on the phone, you hit the star nine. Uh, do we have any speakers, uh, city clerk? And if you're in the audience, fill out the speaker's card. Go ahead.
We do. We have two in person. The first one's going to be Bill Kaufman, and then we'll have one later on, on Zoom.
Perfect.
Okay, Bill.
Hey, again, Mayor, Council. I'll be brief. I had a call from Two City today. They turned down the uh, proposed lease for their upstairs in an urgent care center. They're patiently waiting for us. They very much would like us to be the tenants. And that being said, I've contacted Mikey Puentez, um, and I don't know who's going to be the lead on, on the ordinance. But I gave him a letter from a retired Superior Court judge that I work with, that we put a number of propositions in the city of Los Angeles, and I've worked very closely with ordinances in 12 different cities. That being said, there's ordinances that can be almost replicated for the city of Montclair. There's nothing unique here. And, you know, that being said, the size has gone down from hundreds of pages to some of these are in 30 pages that really identify the unique, unique areas of the cities. Um, what I, what I, I want to go, uh, go further is, and on Central Avenue, and we've done some economic studies, we think that location is a $15 million location, which would yield the city over a million dollars. And there's another location in South Montclair, close to Old Avenue, that we feel because of its location would yield up to about $25 million. And Montclair, from its geographics, could probably take four dispensaries, um, which would probably yield you between four and $6 million in tax revenues out of the gate, and they're only going to grow as the medicinal side of, of these, um, dispensaries grows. What they're seeing is the psychoactive is already sort of old news, but the medicinal side of this is growing rapidly. And you could see from today and five years, they could potentially double their revenue. I don't know if the city, I don't know if you can even answer, if it has buffer zones with surrounding cities. You have so many feet that you're going to not intringe on their area. I know that exists in Clermont and Pomona. And we're working closely with Clermont, and they're moving pretty quickly. But the one who's really moving quickly is Ranch Kukamunga. They've, uh, earmarked six different locations in Rancho, and they feel that their revenue is going to exceed $7 million. All that being said is, cities are moving forward, and I don't know the time schedule that is in place or whom I might talk to relative to an ordinance. And, and I told Mikey, I said, I can get you a number of ordinances to look at, which you can almost replicate and just put it in Montclairian, and it can go very quickly. You know, that being said, really, you could concentrate on the operators and on their experience, their live scans, their financial ability, and the speed that they could get these things up and open. Um, again, I'll contact Mikey if he's not the person. Hopefully, he can address it. But I would, I would guess, you know, if the staff moved quickly, they could have an ordinance in front of this council before the end of the year. And, you know, that being, being the case, I think some of these prime locations could still be secured. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is going to be Katie Parker.
Katie Parker, okay. I remember Katie Parker. Hello, Katie, how's it going?
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, um, council members, uh, city staff, and then all the residents that are listening at home. Um, tonight I have a very fun event to announce. Um, it's right here, um, on San Bernardino Road in Montclair, at the Chino Basin Water Conservation District at our Waterwise, um, Community Center. It is the, um, Waterwise Garden and Pumpkin Fest. It will be from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Um, we'll have, it's, it's a great event for kids and families and everybody. When my kids were little, they used to love to go, and they usually have a petting zoo, and I don't see that here, but I'm, hopefully they do. They have goats that definitely do weed control in the basin, so if they don't have any goats to pet, you can go say hi to the goats in the basin. But they have free kids crafts and activities, free bounce house and face painting, food vendors, vendors, a pumpkin patch, um, pumpkin decorating, pumpkin succulent centerpiece making, um, that sounds like fun, and resources for water conservation, free compost and a plant sale. And also, if you do go to this event, I would highly recommend going through our education center and into our demonstration garden and take a look at all of the wonderful workshops that the Conservation District offers on, um, drought-tolerant landscaping and saving water at your house, um, outside. Um, typically, a residence, about 60% of our water is used outside. So if we learn how to save outside, we can significantly lower our water bills. And the Conservation District is an amazing resource, and it is right here, um, in Montclair. So we are your neighbor. And, um, everyone has a flyer up there, and also I put some flyers, um, right there, and then also at the Chino Basin Water Conservation District's webpage, which is cbwcd.org, I think, but you can just Google it. And this event is there. It's in English, and then it's also in Spanish for people that, that need that. So thank you very much for having me tonight.
Great, well, thank you very much. And obviously Katie's also a member of the, uh, Chino Basin Municipal Conserv- Water Conservation District of Board Directors. Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
This is going to be via Zoom, and it's Carolyn Raff.
Okay, Carolyn. Hello, Carolyn, are you there? Carolyn, Carolyn.
I don't, yeah, I don't know why it should be. I, my brain is always, it chooses me whether I want or not.
Okay, Carolyn, you're on.
Okay, I have, uh, are, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't know why it keeps choosing me. My, my iPad just loves me to talk, but I don't. But anyway, I don't really have anything to report except, uh, on the vector control. The only thing they have found as far as, uh, affected, uh, affected mosquitoes is in Upland and Rancho. Montclair's fine, and from Montclair down is fine, so that you guys can rest easy. There's no problem right now. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. All right, we're done with that. I think no more public comment, or we have somebody else. We're done?
That's correct. That's the last one.
I just like code enforcement. You guys don't have to stay if you don't want to. Not, uh, no one's on probation here, right? Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll move down to consent calendar, and there's an opportunity, uh, pull anything off the consent calendar. So I'll start with my left. Anybody on my left want to pull something off the consent calendar? No?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Be Like Boy 5, please.
All right, B5. Okay, how about my right side? Anybody want to pull some off the right side? No? Okay. I do know that, uh, let me see, one item in PDS, where is that one there? What item is that? C3, so C3, there's a dollar change, am I correct on C3? And the correct dollar amount is $188,213.40.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, on the minutes from the last meeting, I believe we were going to Andrea, we were going to add the, uh, uh, the, uh, add to the minutes that we closed that meeting in the memory of, uh, of the Deputy Sheriff Ryan, uh, Tuck and Bromer. So that'll be added to the minutes. Okay, so we'll go with item B5.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a, a question. It was, I read through the staff report. It is for, um, us to use $20,000 in funds for carts, turkeys, food and toys. But then, but then near the end of the staff report, it says staff recommends using the $20,000 of funds to purchase whole turkeys and assorted food and toys, but the carts are not listed there. So are the carts included? Are they not included?
They shouldn't be included. We purchased them last year. That was a mistake at the big, the one sentence. So we, and we set that money aside, but as donations come in for that, um, we won't necessarily need to use that, but if we need it, it's there.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Richter.
All right. Okay, anything else on the consent calendar? All right, if not, then let's take a motion on the consent calendar. Can I get a motion?
Oh, moved.
Take a motion for the consent calendar as presented.
And then I think, uh, Mayor Paul Tim Johnson, second consent calendar. All right, let's have a, let's have electronic vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, I apologize, I stepped out of the room. Uh, I need to abstain on item C1, please.
You're gonna abstain on item C1?
Yes.
And, uh, I think you have to give a reason why. Can I request your attorney?
I, I have a, uh, I have a business agreement with a competitor of the, or company before us.
Okay. Then Councilmember Lopez will, will abstain in item C1. If you want a separate vote, or you feel comfortable just?
As long as my abstention on that item is recorded, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Electronic vote. Uh, motion's passed 5-0 with Councilmember Lopez abstaining on item C1. The minutes in items B, whatever it is on the, uh, item, uh, regarding this, uh, MPDS is modified. Okay, so we will now go down to consent, uh, council workshop. So we'll have a workshop here at the next council, May October 16 at 5:45, and objections, so ordered. We now go down to communications, and let me see, it looks like it's Marcia's time. All right, Marcia, it's all yours.
Great. I recommend, uh, having your pen handy because I'll be going over quite a few upcoming events. Um, our Montclair After School Program map will be celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month this Friday, October 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Montclair Place in the Center Court. Students from Montero Elementary and Buena Vista Elementary have been practicing cultural dances for the past month and are excited to dance in honor of the Hispanic culture. Also at this event, Vernon's Middle School's Leadership Teens Group will be hosting crafts such as Mexican tissue paper banner making and felt serape making, and that'll be while supplies last for those. The Coed Youth Volleyball League games are back, and they're going to be held on Saturday's beginning, Saturday, October 7th, the Saturday through November 18th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Montclair Community Center. We have four teams this season, so come on out and cheer them on. The Montclair Youth Center is hosting a youth talent showcase. Uh, the theme is Where Stars Are Born. It'll be on Saturday, October 14th, at 3:00 PM in the community center. Auditions are going to be held this Thursday, October 5th, and all youth ages 6 to 17 that live or attend school in Montclair are invited to audition. Uh, the grand prize winner will perform at our annual country fair jamboree next year and receive a trophy, flowers, and donated gift cards from local businesses. If a member of the public is in need of food, they may attend the city's monthly food distribution in the community center on Thursday, October 19th, from 9:30 to 10:30. Or the Feeding America Food Pantry in the Recreation Center Courtyard will be there Wednesday, October 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00. The Human Services Department will be taking holiday food and toy basket applications by appointment. Those appointments must be made by October 20th, and you can make those by calling 909-625-9485. Uh, eligible applicants must live in Montclair and meet specific income guidelines. Families wishing to apply who have a child that attends a Montclair Elementary or Middle School should contact their school office for additional program information. And we will begin, uh, taking donations at the Recreation Center, um, in mid-November, but I'll, I'll announce that date again, um, as it comes closer. But we'll be taking them through December 13th, from 8:00 to 6:00, in the Recreation Center and here at City Hall. Please join us on October 26th, as the city of Montclair's after-school program will be participating in Lights On After School. It's a nationwide celebration of programs that extend beyond the school day. This year's theme is Bookropolis. Projects displayed at the event will focus on beloved novels such as Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, Charlotte's Web, James and the Giant Peach, and more. And our City of Montclair Halloween Spooktacular will be held on Saturday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM inside Montclair Place Mall. The haunting evening will include trick-or-treating, kids' crafts, carnival-style games, costume contests, live DJ, magic show, jumpers, and other ghoulish surprises for the whole family. Don't miss the inflatable spooky haunted maze for those brave souls who wish to enter. Just don't get lost. Um, the popular Halloween costume contest will be judged by our Community Activities Commission. That will begin at 7:30 PM at the main stage. Uh, and the categories will be most scariest, most cutest, most unique, and best in family. Uh, and the two age categories are 0 to 6 years and 7 to 12 years. And the best in family is for two or more family members, all ages dressed in a theme. And finally, just so you can mark your calendars, our Health Fair, the City of Montclair Health Fair, will be held Thursday, November 2nd, from 9:00 to 12 inside the community center. Event will offer community health screenings to all ages and educational exhibits, uh, flu shots, COVID-19 will also be available for participants at the event, along with 30-plus health and wellness vendors with resources from the community. That concludes my report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I will suggest maybe there was, there was a lot of events there. If you can send councilmembers an email, um, appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Question, question on an event with the date. The deadline for families to request was
The deadline for families to request, was it their?
Appointments?
Yeah, it was October, what?
Twentieth.
And that's for the Thanksgiving baskets, right?
No, that's for the Christmas baskets.
Christmas baskets. Thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
We'll move on to the city attorney. Go ahead, Diane.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the one item indicated in the agenda. And that's for the council members to meet in close session regarding labor negotiations regarding the city manager.
Thank you. City manager. I just want to recognize during the month of October. In the Muslim community this month, they'll celebrate Ramadan. This is also known as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I think our Montclair police officers will be wearing a pink patch, am I correct, Chief? You'll see that with the police officers. There's also the Filipino-American History Month, so our residents of Montclair are from the Filipino community. Also, this is also the Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month during the month of October. There's also LGBT History Month. And then finally, for our Polish communities, to Polish-American Heritage Month. So we have a lot of national heritage during the month of October. I just want to announce as Marsh just did a couple events for the council to beware of. October twelve, again, this would be not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday at eleven o'clock in the morning. We'll recognize Mayor Paul Eaton at the US Postal Service, our postal office here. And then at one PM at the Ontario Convention Center is a ceremony to, for the groundbreaking for the West Valley Connector Project. That includes going through Montclair. I also want to recognize the park ceremony we just had. Sunset Park was a very nice event that staff put together. Thank you. Thank you very much. So Councilmember Rue.
There, a lot of these events are going to be well attended. In many cases, I will have to send my regards because of my full-time work schedule. When you pretty much work fifty, sixty, seventy hours a week, it's hard to get off during the day. I try when I can. Evening ones are a little easier. I did attend on Saturday. The Seroptimist International Casino Night. It was fairly well attended, lot of good prizes, a great cause. So many community people were there. It was truly a nice evening, little bit of rain, but. Didn't damper most people's spirits and I know that the Seroptimists work hard all year on this. My kudos to the Seroptimist Club President, our own Diane Wells. And then to the Event Chair, Virginia Riley. Both of them did an excellent job on that. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly. On September twenty-eighth, I attended the Montclair High Football Game against Covina. It was a Thursday night game, which is unusual. Unfortunately, it was not as attended as the games are on Friday. And sad to report that Montclair High lost, I believe, forty-two to eight that night. It's their only loss thus far, which is good that they only have one on the record and all the others are wins. But coming up on Friday, October thirteenth at seven PM. Montclair High School is having their homecoming game, game against Baldwin Park. So on the October thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, seven PM. Homecoming game, Montclair High School versus Baldwin Park at the notorious, or as they say, the world renowned on the PA system. World renowned Ben Baker Stadium. Coming up also October fourth, for those parents that are interested in attending and taking part. Is National Walk to School Day. And I know that the members of the Safe Routes to School Committee were here at the last council meeting. Inviting us as council members, but also the public to join them on the fourth, which is starting at seven AM. They'll be meeting at Anthony Munoz Park and they'll be walking to Elderberry Elementary School, which is Fifth and Benson. Or it is, I believe, Baloverde and Benson on the Montclair side. So anyhow, would love to have you guys there. Bring your signs encouraging people to slow down and look for kids. I also attended Saturday's event for the Seroptimists, their annual fundraiser at their casino night. Was good to see, I believe all of us were there. All five of us were there at one point and I know Tanise was working the. She was being a little bit of Anna White, playing the, the big Wheel of Fortune spin game thing, which is always a hit. Because you're guaranteed to get something no matter what color on the wheel you draw. You're bound to get something. So you're not always, you're not out on the money that you've invested. But kudos to the board, Virginia Riley, others that were Diane Wells that had a hand in it. Thank you for putting it on. It's always a fun event to attend. And then, yes, I also wanted to piggyback on if it wasn't going to be. The request was not going to be made. I'm glad the mayor did do so, but I had prepared a statement on the passing of Terry Kirkman. For those of you that may know about me or may not know about me, prior to me being on council, I actually was a DJ here in town for about fifteen years. In the city and in the region and more or less a, a entertainment person for weddings and ginseng yedas and whatnot. But I've always had a knack for history, but in particular, I've always had a knack for sixties era history. The hippie era folk music, that era's rock and pop music. And little did I know that my love for that era's music would have a Montclair connection. And tying into that, of course, we lost a famous resident on September twenty-third and that was, of course, Terry Kirkman. Who was a founding member of the band, the association. He died at eighty-three at his home here in Montclair and it was an interesting journey considering where he started. Of course, he was born December twelfth, nineteen thirty-nine in Salina, Kansas, and it would eventually lead him all the way to our little city. In the west end of San Bernardino County. His journey to Southern Cal began when his family moved to Chino initially, where his father ran an auto body shop and his mother taught school. He earned an associate's degree right from Chaffey College, so he's definitely a local boy and a local man. Like most aspiring musicians of his time, he was enamored with the famed Troubadour nightclub in West Hollywood. And his then ensemble of twenty members called the Inner Tube. Would perform at the Troubadour along with the likes of David Crosby from Crosby, Stills, Nash and Young. And Cass Elliot, which of course is the infamous singer and one of the best singers of our time, I believe, Mama Cass from the Mamas and Papas. The inner tubes would dwindle down to thirteen members and they were called the Men at that time. A year later, in February of nineteen sixty-five, the group dwindled down to even further to six. And that is when they took on the name the Association. And just by way of acknowledging this man's accomplishment, this resident of ours. His group with many of the songs that he wrote, including the song Cherish. He had seven or the group had seven Grammy nominations with his name attached to the author of the song. In nineteen sixty-seven for the song Cherish for Best Lyrics. Nineteen sixty-seven for Best Recording for Cherish. Nineteen sixty-seven, Best Vocal Group Performance for Cherish. Nineteen sixty-eight, Best Arrangements Accompanying Vocalist-Instrumentalist for Wendy. And I would, I'll try to, I was going to consider trying to hum it or sing it, but I'll spare y'all. And in nineteen sixty-eight, he also got a nomination for Inside Out. Contemporary Vocal Group for Wendy. And the group performance of the association, which perhaps is their most infamous song is Never My Love. He is known for his hits that he had a hand in, like I said, Wendy, Cherish, Never My Love, Along Comes Mary. Everything That Touches You. Of course, he worked with greats like John Phillips, Frank Zappa, Joan Baez and Led Zeppelin. But he left the band in nineteen seventy-two and he would later fully retire from music in nineteen ninety. And he would devote the rest of his life until recently to being an addiction counseling advisor all these years. And, and one story about him, after having so many friends in the music industry die of drugs throughout the sixties and seventies. He felt it was his way of giving back to save some lives for those that were lost along his career. A Montclair resident with storied history. All God's best to the Kirkman family at this difficult time, but it's great to see we have, our little city has such a big towering person within the music industry. That put his thumbprint on it all. Godspeed to him and the family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Paul Ten Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very excited about the casino night that we had the other night. For those of you who do not know, the proceeds for that, from that event go to support women who are heads of households. So that they can get college scholarships and also it's a part of the prison awards that, where we recognize women and girls. Who have made a positive impact for, on the community. So I was really happy to see the, out the, the attendance. I think the rain did dampen a few people, but we still had a pretty good, a pretty good turnout. And I'm happy to report all two hundred and forty-nine gifts were given away from the, from the spin the wheel. So that was fun. I'm also happy to report that it was my privilege to represent the City of Montclair at this year's League of Cities Conference in Sacramento. I went to several of the workshops, but one of them, one of the workshops was about police engagement. And there was some discussion about how that should happen. And as I listened to them talk, I thought Chief Reed should be here because he's got more to say than they did. So kudos to you, Chief, for what you do. And then there was also a few workshops on homeless prevention work. And one of the local, one of our local cities was here in Southern California. Talked about how they worked with this group of social workers and they were able to help lower their homeless population. But then when they told us how much the social workers cost, I was like, our code enforcement can do better than that. Without spending those thousands and thousands of dollars every month. So and I, I think our, our homeless numbers are significantly lower than that cities. And then also, you may recall at the last meeting, I announced that there was going to be a grand open ribbon, ribbon cutting. At one of our City of Montclair's newest restaurants. Well, that restaurant was, that ribbon cutting was rescheduled. It is now scheduled for this coming Thursday, October the fifth. That said Covina, that's on Marina, right here around the corner. So I hope to see you all on Thursday, October fifth at noon. We'll have a ribbon cutting and then we'll have lunch. That concludes my statements.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. If you haven't already mentioned it, Mayor Dutray, I wanted to recognize the passing just three days ago of Senator Feinstein.
I did.
Okay, thank you. And then also the Saturday before last. There was in special Olympics plane pool that. Was, we had a group, the Inland Empire First Responders. And on very, very last minute notice, Chief Reed allowed me to drag him along. And brought with him some other officers from Montclair. So we had some Montclair representation. Which historically we have not had in the Inland Empire First Responders Group. So that was really great. We came in second place. We lost only to the Long Beach First Responders. And as the event was held at the Long Beach Airport, I, I feel like that's okay. We can let them take it. And then also the Sunset Park Groundbreaking was last week. And it seems like there has been overwhelmingly positive support from the residents. I posted something on social media just with the pictures that were presented there at the park. And everyone seems very, very happy. The ones who are not. What's that?
Some people complained.
Well, well, for the ones that weren't happy, they were happy to know that there are many discussions and projects in the way of. The other parks that are being worked on. So we have a lot of happy residents. So thank you for all the hard work that was put into that park development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I just want to piggyback on Senator Feinstein. She's a trailblazer. I mean, she was the first woman of many, many political organizations, the mayor of San Francisco. You, states, a US senator from California. I never met her. I wish I did. I thought she represented California very well, even though she was a Democrat. She was very much of a moderate. She was about trying to get, she was about taking care of business, which I appreciate that. One of her, I believe, one of her achievements is the Ontario Airport. That's when the City of Ontario was able to get control of the airport from City of Los Angeles. And she had a part of that movement. So Senator Feinstein is going to be very much missed and. You know, she, she was definitely a senator for all Californians. I have to state that. So we will adjourn in her memory and along with the memory of Chaplain Allen. Almost and of course Terry Kirkman. So we will now go into closed session.